Stay and raise your right hand and repeat after me.
Oh, wait, wait, wait. Thirty-four seconds.
When it's time in thirty-four seconds.
We'll tell you.
This is media manipulation.
Yeah, just get the backside photo.
Call to order the city council session, study session, meeting of Tuesday, July nineteenth, twenty twenty-two. First agenda item administering the oath of office and seating of council member-elect, Elizabeth Foreman, Ward six. Judge Leila?
You raise your right hand and repeat after me, please. I and state your name.
I, Elizabeth Foreman.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
That I will support, obey, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
The Constitution, Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
And that I will not knowingly receive.
And that I will not knowingly receive.
Directly or indirectly.
Directly or indirectly.
Any money or other valuable thing.
Any money or valuable thing.
For the performance or non-performance.
For the performance or non, non-performance.
Of any act or duty.
Of any act or duty.
Pertaining to my office.
Pertaining to my office.
Other than the compensation allowed by the law.
Other than the compensation allowed by the law.
I further swear.
I further swear.
That I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
My duties.
My duties.
As a council member.
As a council member.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my ability.
Elizabeth Foreman, Ward six. I declare you duly sworn and seated to the office of council member of the City of Norman.
You're here.
So we move on. And then we move up. And then we will move to the study session room for item two.
Yeah, you would have. A whole different side.
Senator. Call us back into session for item two, discussion regarding utility franchise agreements.
Okay. I wanted to provide just a little bit of an overview of franchise agreements in general and how they come to council and what we're required to do with them and just talk about some issues that we know come up from time to time. But first, I'll start with sort of the basics for franchises. A franchise is a right or privilege that allows an entity to do some act, in this case typically occupy the streets and rights of way, which could not be exercised by private individuals. The right to grant franchises is reserved to the voters by the Oklahoma Constitution. Now, the purpose of that provision, as interpreted by the Supreme Court, is to require voter approval before a municipality grants, extends, or renews a franchise, and that's to give the electorate absolute control over the granting of franchises. A utility must have a franchise before it can use the streets, alleys, and public grounds to operate the utility. When these come to you, we do them in the form of an ordinance. Some cities use a resolution, we use an ordinance, but it typically will come to you and with a proclamation and the ordinance so that you all can call the election and give this question to the voters as the Constitution requires. It could also be brought forward by initiative petition, so this would be if twenty-five percent of the registered voters in Norman brought this forward, just like any other question for initiative petition, you all would be required to then place it on an election. And the question before the voters is simply, do you approve or not approve of the franchise? There are only three basic requirements to meet constitutional muster. It can exceed a twenty-five-year term. It cannot be exclusive, so we can't just let one utility have access to the right-of-way. And it has to reserve all lawful power to regulate any charges. So there are areas that the city cannot regulate, and we have to reserve that power to the appropriate authorities. A fee for the cost of access to the right-of-way is very common. If you look on any of your utility bills, including your city utility bills, you will see a franchise fee on there, and that is typically passed on to the customer. So these are the utilities we have operating in Norman. AT&amp;T, of course. Telephone companies have a statewide franchise, so that's not ever been brought to the voters of Norman. And when they added the television service, they entered into an agreement with the city that comes back every five years to pay a fee in lieu of a franchise. And there's a whole long history that could probably be another presentation just on telecommunications, but that does not go to the voters because of federal law. Cox is similar. They're no longer a franchise utility because of federal preemption. They pay a fee in lieu of franchise, and they come to council every five years for that agreement. ONG has been operating in Norman as a franchise utility since nineteen forty-nine, and then in the next couple of years, that franchise will be expiring, so we'll have an election for that. OEC has a franchise agreement that has expired. They pay a fee in lieu of franchise fees for the television service that they now offer, so they have an agreement similar to AT&amp;T and Cox that comes back every five years for the television piece, and then the franchise agreements govern the electricity piece. And then OG&E has operated in Norman since nineteen twenty-three, and of course, they've been a franchise utility, and there are discussions to bring that back to you all to put that on the ballot. The utilities that we operate, private utilities, water, wastewater, those are two that we collect a fee on the local bills, and those go into the general fund. And it's just the cost of accessing the right-of-way, essentially. So there are a number of laws that apply to franchises. The first one is the charter. It says that council can adopt laws and ordinances that are consistent with the Constitution and state statutes to regulate public service and public utility corporations. And then it also says franchises must reserve to the city the right to terminate the agreement and purchase all of the utility's property. Sets out a non-binding arbitration process, and I'll get back to that here in a minute because there are some limitations in state law that take precedence of that. In Title eleven, twenty-one dash two-two-two, there is a moratorium on municipal condemnation of electric cooperatives and electric public utilities. So we could not go and say, we want all of your facilities, we're going to condemn it and become the new operator. We are not allowed to do that by state law, and that has been held by the court to be a matter of statewide concern, so we are expressly preempted from that even if our charter says otherwise. We also have a state law called the Retail Electric Supplier Certified Territory Act. This is, was adopted, I think, in the seventies, but they divide the state essentially into geographical areas and assign areas to particular electric suppliers. The idea was to avoid duplication of services, duplication of infrastructure, more things in the right-of-way, that kind of thing. And so electric companies can only provide services in the designated areas. When you hear, I'm from Texas, when you hear about their system, it's very different. They have what's called free choice, and so you can choose from any number of electric suppliers. They're pretty much getting the power from the same place, but you can choose different suppliers who handle the day-to-day operations. Here, we don't have that. You get what you get based on where you live. There are also federal laws that apply. FERC, the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, is the regulating arm under the Federal Power Act. They regulate certain economic aspects of the public utility industry, but that was expanded back in two thousand and five, and now they're in the business of looking at electric grid reliability. And it's been expanded to all users, owners, and operators of the bulk power system. They oversee large transmission lines, and they regulate a lot of things from this standpoint of reliability. One of the things they regulate is vegetation management. Vegetation is required to be managed to prevent encroachments into what's called the minimum vegetation clearance distance. This depends on how much voltage is running in the line. Higher the voltage, the more clearance you need. They have to conduct inspections of the vegetation along these transmission lines every year and submit an annual work plan, which must be completed each year. Corporation Commission here in Oklahoma regulates utilities as well, and they have general supervision over all public utilities. I mentioned our charter provision that says we can, we can regulate what's not already regulated or what's not inconsistent with state law, and this is really what that's about. It's the Corporation Commission. They're the primary overseer of public utilities. They have, anytime a utility wants to fix the rates for the customers, they have to go to the Corporation Commission. There's a hearing process. The Corporation Commission promulgates rules regarding how services are provided, the operation of the utility, the management, and the conduct of business. And rural electric cooperatives operate a little bit differently. It can be included in the OCC regulation, but they can offer up on rates. Rural electric cooperatives are member utilities. If you, if you are a customer of OEC, you'll know they, they call you a member. It's not a shareholder-based corporation, and so they operate just a little bit differently. And it's really goes back to how they started, which was to provide services in areas where there was nothing, unincorporated areas. And so over the years, that's sort of evolved, but they, they get treated just a little bit differently. Rules promulgated by the Corporation Commission prevail over city ordinances that materially affect rights and duties of franchise utilities, whether that's rate setting, regulation of day-to-day affairs, and specifically where that affects the utility's duty to repair, maintain, or install its equipment. They are also, at the Corporation Commission, concerned about reliability. Each utility must have a reliability program that limits the frequency and duration of electric service interruptions, and they have to maintain acceptable electric service reliability levels over time. So they're looking at, you know, the age, distribution, and location of equipment on each circuit, the number, density, and location of customers on each circuit, the trees, the vegetation plan, and, and how all of these things could impact reliability when you have winds, storms, ice, accidents, all of those things that can really affect your electric service. They also have vegetation management rules, so this limits how far we can really go because we have to be consistent with state law. It defines vegetation management as all activities associated with the trimming, removal, or control of plant material in the proximity of energized electric utility conductors and equipment. They have to, any utility provider has to submit a vegetation plan annually to the Corporation Commission that talks about what activities you're going to undertake, the calendar you're going to follow, how it will be implemented, how are you going to assess the success of your program, and then name and contact information of a company rep familiar with the plan. Utilities are required to, at a minimum, perform vegetation management on a four-year cycle. Of course, if you're having reliability issues or you're not achieving the required clearance, it may happen more often than that. They have to track and record all vegetation management costs. They are required to make a reasonable attempt to contact the landowner at least twenty-four hours in advance in urban areas. Rural areas are a little bit different. Reasonable amount of time in advance, reasonable attempt. This could be a written notice, telephone call, or in person, and they have to make a reasonable effort to accommodate the landowner/tenant customer's request to be present during the work. It's an emergency repair, no notice is required because we're talking about reliability again. We've talked over the years about, you know, what, what gets sprayed on vegetation under electric lines or around utility structures, and we're restricted there as well. The State Department of Agriculture says that no city can adopt or continue any ordinance, rule, regulation, or statute regarding pesticide sale or use that is more stringent than their rules, and this is provided by state law. And they regulate pesticides and licensed pesticides specifically for right-of-way maintenance and ground line treatment of utility poles. When I last gave this presentation in twenty seventeen, I think it was, we were concerned then about the Farm Bill Act of twenty eighteen. That was kind of working its way slowly through Congress. That ended up getting adopted in a different version, but, so there's now a different bill pending. It's currently in committee in the House that would amend the same act that the Farm Bill would have impacted to completely prohibit local regulation of pesticide use, so we'll be following that as well. So all of that discussion sort of culminated in an ordinance that the city adopted in twenty nineteen, and we worked very closely with the electric utilities that serve Norman to sort of adopt a local framework that would be consistent with state and federal law to regulate vegetation management activities. And so that looked at notice, so we wanted to ensure we had cooperation between the city and the utilities. Know what areas maintenance is scheduled for. We wanted to have a certified arborist to serve as a contact person and identify any contractors to be used. We wanted notice provided to owners and residents either through door hangers, mail letters, posted signs, this kind of thing. We asked them to be willing to meet with, with property owners or residents if requested, and then we incorporated those emergency guidelines that we saw in the Corporation Commission rules in the case of an emergency. Or dangerous trees. No notice to the city, still provide notice to the owner or resident that's reasonable. We adopted best management practices. This is ANSI eight-three-hundred standards. These are standards created by arborists about how to properly trim trees and prune trees. We incorporated language about the chemical control methods, supervision and oversight of contractors, how they identify themselves. So if you come home and someone's cutting a tree and under the line, you kind of know who they're working for and what utility it is. And then a requirement that it be cleaned up within a certain amount of time after the work was done. But our, our biggest piece that, that I think has really changed since twenty seventeen and twenty eighteen, we didn't have a forester at that time, and we knew that we needed to do more in terms of community education. And so efforts were made at that time. This is from the Arbor Day Foundation, which is a great organization that's, that's, you know, all about preserving trees, but recognizing that you have to have the right tree in the right place. So you don't want a tall, growing tree under the utility line. Our utilities department doesn't want a deep-rooted tree over our sewer and water lines. The roots will go in. And so there's certain things that, that we, we have tried to educate on in terms of what can be planted and what should be planted adjacent to or in the right-of-way so that we avoid these conflicts in the future. With that, that's all I have for the presentation, but I wanted to leave time for questions. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Not many questions.
I'd gorge you to death, or?
No. It, we're coming on this time that we're going to have to consider signing or not signing or bringing that to the people. In the, in the, in your best estimation, what we have is an agreement, is a standard agreement like everybody else?
Yes. Anytime we look at franchise agreements with the utility companies, regardless of which company it is, they're very interested in having uniform agreements from city to city so they know how to operate and it can be consistent. Those rate cases that go to the Corporation Commission are not just based on Norman, it's based on the whole operation. So it's important to them that they be pretty consistent. Oftentimes, you'll see a clause in there that says if another utility gets more favorable terms, then this, this agreement would also be updated, and so that's not uncommon to see, but typically, they're fairly consistent.
I think that'd be good for safety of the, of the line workers, too. They know what's happening from town to town. There's not something special in one town.
So do we have a, I guess, list of what the last time the council did talk about OG&E agreement specifically? And what, what we were kind of wanting then compared to what OG&E is proposing now? Where are we?
The concerns back in twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen had a lot to do with the downtown power grid, which has been completely redone, streetlights. And then there was, there were questions about renewable energy, and OEC, OG&E both operate as part of a larger power pool, and those pools have increasingly diversified their portfolios so that they are getting more renewable energy, but it is a much bigger question than just the power provided to Norman. So that, we have seen improvements in that area.
And the power, the streetlights, big issue being when they're out. Sometimes they're out for a long time. Is there a better way to identify when they're out and they get fixed and things like that?
Yes, and LED lights. You know, we've brought, I think, OG&E in particular has brought on a lot of LED lights, and that is improving the notice and the, the way to identify outages. But what we do when we find out a streetlight's out is we typically, the Action Center often gets the call, and we will coordinate with OG&E and identify whether it's our light, their light, or OEC's light, whoever's light it is, and, and work to get that replaced as soon as possible, and that, that has been a good process.
Is that working during, no, having no franchise agreement? Are they still fixing?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah.
And I recall them mentioning something about there being a system where it automatically tells them that there's a light out and where, and so residents don't have to call it in, call us, and then we pass it. It's like.
Yeah, there's been some changeover in what kind of equipment is available, and so that was sort of driving the LED light discussion as well. And so I think as LED lights come online, I understand, you know, is they have to replace the whole circuit, not just one, one light here or there, and then you get the benefits of that system, I believe.
And the way I understand it, the franchise, is it maybe the fee that we collect basically covers the cost of all the streetlights to be on? We're not actually paying for that in the end? Is that?
Right. That, that has been part of our franchise agreement is a credit towards our electric service to a certain amount, and that typically covers the streetlights.
And then the other big issue was the burying utility, burying the lines, which is the standard practice for new development already. But after multiple events where power lines get knocked down in older parts of the city and they keep having to be replaced, people ask what, you know, what's the cost of that to have to keep replacing those all the time? And the time lost when they're out because they get knocked over by the wind or by trees or whatever it may be. So that's been a big one. And I think former council members were wanting some kind of commitment about a long-term plan or something like that.
Yeah. So we do require it in all new developments. It is expensive to do in existing developments, and you have to then dig under those trees that we don't want to lose to install the lines. I think there are pros and cons to above-ground and underground, but it's just a matter of cost. And would the Corporation Commission even approve that kind of cost over the whole system for just Norman or just poor Norman or just neighborhoods at Norman? And so we've looked at creative solutions to that, and we're actually exploring one right now for a neighborhood by campus, so we'll keep you updated about that piece. But that's really outside of the franchise agreement. That's just trying to troubleshoot and problem-solve some of these issues.
Well, I think some, the former, some of the former members of council viewed the franchise agreement as the only, like, avenue we had because a lot of this stuff isn't required or there's federal law or state law that preempts us, but that this agreement was our only chance to say, hey, well, will you just agree to do these things for us because we want it? And that's kind of where it got hung up, at least before, was there was a, and the twenty-five-year thing, I remember, was a big part that some members had a problem with.
And that's a challenge because when you think about the infrastructure that's in the ground for any of these utilities, we're talking millions of dollars. And to finance that infrastructure, to be able to maintain that infrastructure and cash, cash flow that essentially, the longer term is helpful because you're issuing debt over the twenty-five years or the life of the, of the equipment, essentially. And so that's really challenging for a utility to have less time because I think you have to be able to debt finance that over a short amount of time if you don't have a term, a longer term, and so it gets more expensive.
And there was a desire for like a regular review, I remember as well, like it was like every five years or something, even though it wouldn't be, I guess, binding or we couldn't change anything, but to check up and see, well, how are we doing on the renewable stuff? Are we actually pursuing it? You know, things like that. That's some of the stuff.
Thank you, council member. Studley?
So I do have a couple of questions similar to the burying of the lines, and I don't know, are we allowed to speak to OG&E directly or is this just?
It's fine if you'd like.
So what I want to know, I know previously we've had some conversations, and you had mentioned that OG&E as a whole is working on burying older lines, but it just takes time because it is costly. Can you tell us a little bit more about that and where you guys are at in the process of doing that?
And I, I will, but I defer.
Okay.
Well, we are working on that, and like Catherine stated, I mean, it just depends on the scope of the work, where, where is located, we can't, because it's not a, a cost that can be spread out across every single customer. So we can't just say, okay, we're going to do this in Norman, because then we would have to get into the Corporation Commission, and the Corporation Commission would have to approve spreading that cost across.
Right. That's, that wasn't my question. I'm curious, like, any, OG&E as a whole, whenever I've had meetings with her, I've been told that your company as a whole is trying to work towards burying some of these older lines. So what is your progress in that in the state of Oklahoma?
Across our service territory, we have to actually go back to our engineering department and ask to see how much of that we've done. That's not something I.
But it is something that you guys have started in our state.
Yes. And every time, every time that we have the opportunity, and whether it makes sense to bury those lines, we're trying to do so, just like we are trying to do so with new development.
We're in Oklahoma, and it rains, and there's wind, and it freezes, so there's need to bury all the lines because I'm sure it's just as costly for you guys as it is to replace those every winter or every storm season as it is for our citizens to replace the lines leading into their house. So, and I understand that you can't go straight to the Corporate Commission and ask for Norman specifically, but I'm curious, are we in your plans to do any, any near-future line burying for older development?
I know that we are actually looking at some areas in the downtown area. There are some neighborhoods also that are being assessed. I don't know exactly what that looks like yet because we just started doing those studies, so it's being evaluated. As the need arises or someone, as the city requests for us to take a look at it.
Okay.
Councilmember Studley, in a, in a conversation with OG&E, I, I had a, we were at an event, and I'm sitting at a table with a lady in Ward two, and she asked, can, can you tell me how we would go about my neighborhood, putting together a plan to underground lines in my neighborhood? And we reached out through Kimberly and spoke to the engineering department and said, can we, let's, let's take this lady's neighborhood as a case study and have you guys tell us what circuits serve the neighborhood, what's above-ground, what's underground, and let's identify what it would cost for this real-life neighborhood in Norman and figure out, you know, how many customers the undergrounding would support? And they're working on that task. We actually met yesterday morning. We're setting up a Zoom call with that property owner who made the request to be able to show her in an aerial photo. These are the circuits. You tell us what you were thinking you guys, as a neighborhood, were anticipating having undergrounded. We'll be able to cost those pieces out individually, and then we'll be able to bring that conversation back to the neighborhood to say, you know, typically, the ability to put together a district, an underground utility district, and our city attorney and her team would have to help us put together the, the language to say, yes, for this. yes, for this project specific, we could underground it. We could potentially spread the cost over everybody in the neighborhood if they agree over 25 years and issue a bond to underground the utilities and recoup those costs through an assessment district over the life of the bond issue of 25 years. And if that model works, we, we would be able to, you know, replicate that and do that over and over and over again. But we'll have real costs for a real neighborhood dealing with those above-ground issues right now in Ward Two.
So would that be kind, I mean, I hate to say the word tiff, but kind of similar, where it would be some type of tax for that neighborhood in general or?
Yes, it would be neighborhood-specific and it would just be an assessment that they would agree to levy on themselves. It would be recorded against the real property. So if they sold the house, the person buying the house, we still got to pay off the bonds would be the.
So would O G and E be helping, assisting in any of that cost at all since it's also benefiting them in the future?
Yeah, but so my, my argument with the folks at O G and E to, in, in terms of participation would be, when we're, when you're dealing with a real neighborhood, the ability to say, okay, what, what has tree trimming cost in the last umpteen years? And what, what will you no longer spend trimming trees and doing maintenance on those above-ground lines? So absolutely a negotiation to take place. And dealing with real-world situations, they can say, yes, these lines of, we've lost power to the neighborhood, you know, four times in the last five years and the average outage was absolutely a tree fell down, whatever. So real-life information we thought was, was actually the best approach instead of everything hypothetical.
Yeah.
And, and this was requested by the neighbors. And we thought, what a great opportunity for us to actually put the cost on the table and sit around and see if we can't solve that, that problem one neighborhood at a time.
I like that. And I, I definitely think you guys can afford to help with some of that cost since you just raised your rate. So, but yeah, that's, and so are, are you saying that we can't put anything at all in our franchise agreement relating to that? Like nothing at all relating to looking and over the 25-year period repairing some of the old infrastructure or replacing?
It has to be an agreement, so it can't be one-sided. Last time we tried that, did not go well. We ended up not calling, having to sort of un-call the election because it was a one-sided agreement. We have to be able to work it out. And we'll have three franchise agreements coming in the next two years.
Well, since this has gone back and forth several times, and I know even since I've been on council, this has come before us as well. And so I'm curious, you're saying it's a one-sided thing. Is there anything that O G and E has come back to negotiate with us or is it just no, 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 no?
No, I mean, they're certainly willing to explore creative solutions. And that's what we've been doing the last few years. Their vegetation management folks worked very closely with us and sowed at O E C's on the ordinance. We've worked on the downtown power grid, the LED lights, this issue, just trying to find a solution.
But if we're doing like the downtown power grid and like this neighborhood and things like that, and they're agreeing to it, can we not put it in writing that they will continue to do that over the next 25 years? And obviously not in the capacity where they're going to replace all the lines in just Norman, but just to where there's some type of accountability that we have, that our citizens have to say, hey, are you really coming back and looking at this? Or are you just right now revving our back because we're, you want us to sign this franchise agreement?
What we've talked about over the last four or five years is doing a separate agreement, not part of the franchise. Because that is an issue where if you have a different franchise agreement in every community, that's really challenging for the utilities. So we have talked about, you know, do we want to do a separate agreement? And it kind of addresses the Norman-specific issues outside of the franchise. And that's something that we continue to discuss.
But that's not guaranteed outside of the franchise agreement?
I mean, it's, it's the same as any other contract. It just wouldn't be voted on by the voters. It wouldn't be voted on by council.
Councilmember Foreman.
My, my question was just sort of along the same vein of what councilmember Studley and Holman were talking about. With the, the power lines, I'm a big fan of buried power lines. And so I didn't know if maybe it's separate agreements that when we do have, you know, freezes and things break when they go and repair, instead of putting more above the head, that's when you do. Like as it pops up, sort of thing. So that would just be my, my interest in trying to pursue that as an option.
So it would be hard to dig frozen.
Well, yes. Get a hairdryer, really big hairdryer.
That agreement, that separate agreement would have some like contractual legal.
Stipulation.
Can't just be like, well, it's, it's nothing.
Yeah, I mean, we could approach it a few different ways. But I think if you put it in the franchise agreement, you're locked in for 25 years. It may, may be something you want to change later. It may be something that needs to be modified later. And you wouldn't be able to do that without going to the voters. And, and that's really not the purpose of a franchise agreement. So it seems like it's a better fit in some sort of outside agreement.
But it'd be something that if a future council said, look, they signed this agree, this other agreement in 2022 and they're not doing it now. But they signed this, said they would, there would be recourse?
Yeah, I mean, it would be a breach of the contract, yeah.
So, you know, the issue with the trees as well is that, I know that burying them, burying the lines can have an impact on trees as well. But I think what we're seeing right now is trees are getting sliced up and they're getting cut down anyway in a lot of cases. And there are some cases where people feel like you might as well just remove it. If you're going to slice it in half, it looks terrible. And now I have to look at it every day and it's destroyed. And, and so if, if burying meant that new trees could be planted nearby or, you know, and that people would never have to worry about them getting chopped up and sliced in half again, I mean, I'd certainly be interested to hear more about what our, our expert on staff has to say. But, but that's the kind of feeling I've been getting over the past couple of years is where I'm seeing some trees get removed anyway. There is potentially one in my backyard that might have to be removed. And then when they're not removed, they're getting sliced either in half or in some cases, it's like 75 degree, it's like almost the whole tree's gone, there's just like a quarter.
Two little branches.
And it's, and in many cases, it's like, it used to cover the sidewalk and provide shade. And now that slice is gone and it's now just like hanging over the street. So it looks really bad. It makes, it hasn't, it has an impact on my mental health when I see it. So I like, I feel anxiety about it every time I see a tree trimming vehicle now. And so, so that's kind of, I think, where some folks are at is go ahead and bury them so that we don't have to worry about them getting destroyed, the trees, but also the lines getting knocked down. Or because these weather events we keep having in Oklahoma that keep seeming to be more extreme and more frequent than before.
And councilmember Holman, that, that could be the vehicle in terms of an agreement. And, and in our conversations and I, I'll tell you, O G and E is very responsive. And when we call them with, you know, questions and can you guys tell us what this means? And they've always been really responsive. We talked about, you know, wrong tree, wrong place, replaced with right tree, right place. Net-net, more new trees in Norman. That would be a thing we would love to have. Go into, you know, a, a study that would include O E C, O G and E, our arborist. And, and we do recognize certain trees have, you know, bad roots that are not good for our sewer system or our water system or the laterals that go up to the houses. And as councilmember Holman identified, the process of undergirding, it'll kill a lot of trees. So the ability to say, okay, and, and some of those may be the wrong tree in the wrong place. And, and, and we should have that whole plan for how they are replaced with what? And how, you know, how closely should they be planted? And what's going to be good for underground utility life? Because we don't want to do damage underground with bad roots in the wrong place either. But I think the, the ability to work cooperatively with all of our franchise holders on that strategy and that's the implementation guide, that can be one of those agreement pieces that could be contractually established.
But that would be separate from the.
Franchise agreement.
But they don't necessarily have to sign that agreement if we're already granting them the franchise, right? They can be like, oh, we're already locked in for 25 years, screw you, Norman.
Well, they wouldn't have to either way. But I mean, I think the idea here is collaboration. And we have seen good collaboration from O G and E, O E C. We haven't had much with O N G, we don't have the same issues, but.
Fortunately, they're not above grant.
Definitely, we, we have spent the last five years working closely with both utilities, trying to work out issues as they come up. And I don't expect that to change.
I don't know which one, okay.
So I'm hearing collaboration also as we're trying to do Ready for 100. Like, let's say we're making electricity and it comes back, like, can that help us? I was reading in the National League of Cities, some people have a deal with their franchises where some of the extra revenue goes into their general funds. Like, is, how does that work with the Ready for 100 stuff?
Ready for 100 had a, a very ambitious goal of 100% renewable energy. The challenge, I think, is, is Oklahoma generally is part of the Southwest Power Pool, which is a larger pool of electricity. And, and it uses a variety of sources. I don't recall the exact percentages and my stats would have been a few years old probably. But they, that renewable energy piece was increasing with wind and solar and things like that. I don't think it could meet the demand, and please tell me if I'm way off base here, but of, of the power grid with just renewable energy at this point, there's just not enough. But, you know, that's something that's, that they're aiming for is, is increasing that renewable energy piece.
Anybody work on benchmarks around that previously or?
So we had two pieces and I'm sorry, I don't have them. So I don't recall the details specifically, but I can get them to you. Ready for 100 came forward, but we also had our own E-CAB group working on something that was more city-focused. And so we, they continue to work on that and look at those goals for the city.
The last statistic I heard, and it, and it was in the last 12 months, but the state of Oklahoma was about 40% renewable energy the last time they were measuring. And what we understand is as the older gas-fired power plants reach full depreciation and they're taking those offline, that I can tell you there is a, an effort underway on the part of O G and E to replace those with renewable systems. And we actually were having conversations about a piece of property that the city owns. Could that be available for several megawatt solar installation? It was near existing O G and E infrastructure. And those conversations are happening at O G and E's request, not our, you know, demand. So we are seeing their movement and desire to invest in renewables right now.
Councilmember Foreman.
My question would be to Mr. O'Leary. What sort of trauma would that cause your department when it comes to sewers and roots? And where to bury and, and try to, how disruptive would that be to what we?
To go underground?
Yeah.
Catherine spoke to it pretty well. The, the undergirding of, of other utilities has a whole other set of effects on our utilities, our streets, our sidewalks and so on. So just a little bit of a mixed bag and we're pretty accustomed to the system that we have today. Something I want to mention though, that you may not know, I know some councilmembers have told me they didn't realize this. We talk about relocating utilities for road projects all the time. You may not realize that that's at the expense of the utility when we have a franchise agreement. They pay for all those relocation costs to get that gas line pole out of the way of the new road. So that's another real important thing that we do every day. And we appreciate having that franchise agreement that, that requires them to pay that bill and send it to the city.
Thank you.
Yeah, one thing I would like to see in regard to that is, you know, we have had several road projects where we've buried utility lines as we did the street widening like on Lindsay Street. And it looks a lot nicer and you don't have to worry about them falling down and all that anymore. But you know, like, we're getting ready to do Jenkins and that one has come up several times. We've had former councilmembers that felt very strongly about trying to get the utilities buried on that project. But I know, I'm wondering about how does a partnership with O G and E or other utilities work? If you say, we're going to be doing this project, we're widening this street, we're going to be tearing it all up. We'd like to go ahead and bury what's above-ground right now. Do we pay the full cost? Is there a way to have a cost share or some help? Because I, I do think if we're doing that and we bury them, we're providing a benefit to them that their equipment's not going to be up in the air anymore and be susceptible to storms and all those things. So maybe it's a difficult process for them to just go in and, and bury utility lines in neighborhoods and, and all those things on their own because of it being a statewide deal. But if it's, we've got a project that we're doing, is there some potential for collaboration there? Partnership, you know, we'll cover, we'll, maybe it's not 100%, but will you help us cover the cost of this, on this street that we're about to do?
So two pieces we learned in a, in a downtown review yesterday with a couple of the engineers on the O G and E side. And what we, you know, as we're looking at a bunch of overhead in the downtown.
The alleyways downtown specifically.
Yeah, and, and transformers up on the cross members. What it boiled down to in those particular instances is, is there enough real estate on which we could put those transformers, either in an underground vault or above-ground in a green box? And it, it, there are certain blocks in downtown where it's literally solid buildings. We don't have enough real estate to put a dumpster back there for trash service and we're thinking, where? And to, to bury the transformers is big cost. To be able to put them at grade in a big green box is more affordable. Jenkins is, of course, we, we know what our constraints are in the right-of-way between the university and the private property owners on the east side of Jenkins. And a lot of the lines for O G and E are in the backyards or like right in the middle of the block, you know, kind of over the top of the house. And it would be a matter of, one of the recommendations was if you guys can help us identify new demand, we do get to factor in the cost of providing the additional capacity for new demand into the cost. And we can participate. We talked about a factory obscura development in the downtown. And yes, new load, new demand for electricity, that will allow them to participate in the cost of any activity we, we undertake in the downtown. Jenkins, I, I would say the ability, and I don't know if the university is a customer, if they're producing all of their own.
Yeah, I think they produce their own.
We, I, you know, they're talking about taking down old towers, building additional student housing. My guess is there will be a new demand. I don't know if they're going to cover the new demand all on their own generation or if they're going to need some additional utility service. But there is a willingness on the part of O G and E in all of our conversations to, you know, work collaboratively and identify where the demand is, which gives them kind of that green light, yes, we can participate in those scenarios.
On Jenkins, the part I was specifically talking about is from Constitution to Timberdale along the frontage, along the park frontage. We just had some trees that were sliced in half at Reeves Park because there are some power lines between the street and the sidewalk. The trees are on the other side of the sidewalk, but for some reason they got sliced anyway. But that would be the part, I know once it gets to Timberdale, it goes into the ground and then I think it comes back up behind those houses. But the part that's from Timberdale to Constitution, it's on the frontage part, it's in the part that we're going to be widening. And so that's why I'm like, that'd be a good opportunity for us to bury those.
Yeah, and are right-of-way already.
The ones that are along the street.
Yeah, we own all of that, obviously, through the whole park.
And same thing for Constitution, there's above-ground power lines from Jenkins to Klassen that are on the north side of the street, I believe. And so there's no homes or anything, but that would be an opportunity again to bury those. It looks a lot nicer going by the golf course and Reeves Park and all that stuff. So those type of projects where there's power, above-ground power lines along our street that we're going to be widening or improving. I understand it's a lot more difficult when you're talking about behind houses and especially when there's not an alleyway. Like in my house, there's no alleyway, it's just the back fence and the back fence. So, but there's a power line that pulls that run right in between the two fences. So it's like, I don't even know how you get back there really. But, but the street projects where they're in the right-of-way, they're existing above-ground and we're going to be doing a project anyway, is there some way that we can share some of the cost?
And I do believe those are probably two pieces of, of low-hanging fruit in terms of complexity. Downtown is really, really challenging just because it's so tight. And in, in, the engineers talk about, you, you want the wire to be as close to the meter as you can get so you just don't lose power in miles and miles of line. There's not a whole lot of power meters coming off either one of those lines on that stretch of Jenkins or that stretch of Constitution. And I don't believe they are transmission lines, which are big voltage and really expensive in underground. I think from what I see, they are distribution lines, lower voltage, much more cost-effective to underground. And I would love to make that phone call and I don't have to make a phone call, I can ask. I can ask these ladies. Ask the engineers to take a peek at those two pieces of infrastructure to identify, are there... I don't think there's even a lot of transformers on those pieces that we would have to underground or put in a wall.
Yeah, just the lines, old lines.
Yeah.
Just the drops that go off to where...
So I would ask if we can talk to the engineers about, let's bring us back a package on that stretch of Jenkins, because that is, yeah, we own the right-of-way.
Yeah.
All the way to the east.
Constitution and Timberdale.
Yep. Thank you.
And then the downtown alleyways, my suggestion there is if we can't bury them because of the space, if we could just replace what they're attached to currently and redo all the wires, because, you know, the trucks go down the alleyways and they catch those wires and they rip them out. I don't know how often it happens anymore, but it used to happen a lot when I worked on Main Street. And, because I worked in a building that faced Main Street, and the back door came out onto the alleyway. So those lines that get loose and they hang down and those trucks hit them. And then some of the poles that they're on are like crooked, and it looks like they're just barely... The wood looks like it's rotted and old and looks like it's barely hanging on and...
In our tour yesterday with the engineers in tow, we got about two blocks east of us on the alley north, or excuse me, south of Main Street. Oh, it was right by the courthouse. And just as we get ready to turn into the alley, we see our fire trucks, lights and sirens, and a roll-off dumpster truck, not a city truck, knock down the power lines 20 minutes before we got there. Hot wire laying on the ground, law firm out of electricity as they're remodeling. All their carpet was stacked up in a truck and this hot wire laying out over the hood. And we had to take, we said, oh, we planned it just so you guys could see how often this happens in downtown. And, you know, our fire guys are coming over like, don't go down the alley. And we said, well, these are the OG&E engineers. And they said, wow, they got here fast. That's just how we kind of lucked out. But it was just an example that, we said, well, it's Monday, it happens, you know, often enough.
Yeah.
This time it wasn't our truck, but I can imagine, you know, your heart beats when you're in a steel vehicle and all of a sudden, you know, you just knock down 12,500 volts onto the hood of your vehicle. But it was just the perfect example, perfect timing for our OG&E engineers and our reps to say, yep, whatever the new solution is, is it higher? Is it different? I mean, do we, do we, not on two poles down the middle of the alley, but on one pole on one side of the alley that free up the overhead, so...
Just some steel, you know, H-frames or something.
Get us up there a little higher so we're not hitting it as often as we do.
I've shown you the one in front of Highland Dairy, too. Talked about, showed Larry that one last week.
Yep.
I've never seen a truck hit it, but they're very good at maneuvering. It's just right there, right where they back hit it.
Matter of time.
Thank you.
And there's also traffic hazards and things like that. Moving poles takes away traffic hazards if somebody gets off the road. So there are good things. I think those would be wonderful conversations to have as a separate conversation from the franchise agreement and doing things. Because it's working together to get a lot of that stuff. As I remember, burial line and aerial line are two different kinds of line, right? You can't bury aerial line.
Correct.
Okay. And so that's, the whole equipment has to be changed out. All new line, all new pedestals, all new everything else that you put in there. And it's, it'd be easy if you could just drop it down and make it work, but it doesn't work well on the ground, so. Thoughts, comments, other?
Next steps?
Next steps? The call to place the franchise agreement on the ballot, the second reading, would be August 9th. That is when it was set to be brought back to a date specific. So that, right now, that is when it'll show up on your agenda. This conversation about the cooperative agreement with OG&E, OEC, and the city of Norman on the wrong tree, wrong place, right tree, right place, net-net more new trees for Norman. I would love to start working on that cooperative agreement.
I think it should also include the reviewing old neighborhoods and seeing how we can move forward. And again, I know it's not going to happen overnight, but if we can make a 25-year plan or something, I think that that's fair for all of them. If you'll include that in your replace a tree stuff.
Absolutely happy to. And I don't know what the, you know, it's, what is the life of an above-ground power line anyway? I'm sure they don't last forever. They must have some depreciable...
But we have ones up there in, on, by my daughter's house. And on Mosia, they're probably back to the, probably back to the 50s or 60s.
Son of a gun.
I mean, they're old, they've been replaced, some of the line, or some of the poles because of ice or whatever. But, I mean, they're old, the drop in that thing is a heck of a sway. And it bothers me every time she has a, or we have a storm. But so far, it's hung up. The problem is, as Councilmember Holman had said, is how do you get to the back? There is no alley in that. And so you can't get a bucket truck down there well. So those guys have to work off the ground, and it's kind of hard. And then this, if we did go back, shifting gears, if we did go back in second reading, we decide to do that, then we're talking January 10th for a...
January 9th? It's whatever that second Tuesday is, I believe.
10th?
10th, yeah.
Yeah, I remembered it.
That's in the election in B.J. and we did that.
Right.
Oh, okay. That's why I remembered the date.
So they vote in August, November, June, February, potentially April. I'm a voter fatigue. Oh, man, I'm tired. I want to vote.
All right.
Okay.
So we're done with this topic. Any other que...
Sorry. I know that I just walked in, but I have been watching. I'm sorry, I was at the vet with a sick pet, so that's why I was late. Obviously, a conversation that I've wanted to be a part of with, I know Ward 2 was mentioned earlier about our neighborhood. And I've had several conversations with Kimberly about many of the issues that everybody was kind of touching on, so I appreciate you all. Kind of highlighting all of the things that Ward 2 residents really care about, namely trees, buried power lines, things like that. So one of the things that I'd like to know, there was some discussion about outside agreements for, from OG&E or other companies. Where does that currently stand? And then is there, Kimberly and I had talked about, a potential opportunity to do some maybe kind of system-wide Norman survey information or have some kind of committee that was working on this specifically to identify specific problem areas or, you know, have conversations about buried power lines and where they go in this right tree, right place conversation? So is that something that we are interested in pursuing from the OG&E side?
Certainly.
Sorry, I can't see high. Okay, because that's definitely something that I and a couple of other councilmembers that I've talked to would be very excited to have conversations moving forward about what that looks like. And I know that there were several conversations and questions asked about, you know, plans and, I guess, steps to burying more lines, not just in Norman, but system-wide across OG&E's system and coverage area. And so there was, I think, some answers about that that was said, yes, that were, it's forthcoming. But when can we have more information about those steps? Maybe, we had talked about maybe not, that doesn't look like percentage of coverage of buried lines, but when can we have information regarding how much OG&E, how many buried lines, percentage of lines that you've buried over the last five years? Or kind of what is coming forward? Because I think that that's a really important conversation that our residents really care about. I think it's difficult to say that, oh, it's happening, but not having some kind of metrics that kind of really ground us in understanding where that's coming from.
I can certainly go back and kind of have engineering take a look at what we've done so we have an idea.
And, you know, I do understand the sensitivity of, you know, where systems are and, you know, not disclosing all of our infrastructure because of, you know, attacks and things like that. But just doing some kind of good-faith conversations with us and allowing for kind of opportunities for the community to know a bit more about what that looks like.
Based on Councilmember Schuler's thought process, when I looked at Mr. O'Leary, and we talk about engineering design criteria for all new development, do we, the city, say, if you're going to build a new subdivision, everything's underground? That's the new standard? So I'm guessing what we have in terms of above-ground, it's now very finite because new development, everything's underground. So it's one of those, I think, it's a tackleable, manageable kind of a task that, you know, council's priorities become our priorities, that all new stuff, it's already underground. So when you think about a percentage of the system that's above-ground, the percentage will dwindle just because new stuff's already underground, no matter what. And our ability, over time, to start identifying circuits that make the most sense and, you know, whenever there are reliability issues and that type of thing, our ability to put together a strategy with OG&E to say, how would we go about prioritizing those? I think would add a ton of value to our workload. It would help Mr. O'Leary and the public works guys know when, oh, we're going to have a road project, and yes, it correlates to our plan.
Yes.
We need to go engage the guys at OG&E or OEC.
Exactly, and those are some of the discussions and things that I'm really hoping that we can kind of communicate better on as we think about infrastructure. And I know, just to kind of reemphasize, that Ward 2 and Ward 4 and parts of Ward 7 in kind of our oldest areas within our core of Norman, I would bet large sums of money on the fact that that's where the majority of our overhead lines are and where we're having probably most of the issues. Because I hear all the time, you know, oh, my power's out and it's a bright, beautiful sunny day, and why, why is that happening? And that is really a lot of frustration that happens.
It even happens with buried places. Ours goes out.
Yeah, I'm not saying that it doesn't, but with the frequency that it happens within Ward 2 and Ward 4 that I really know about. And then I guess we had started, you had started to talk about the date for when this is coming to the ballot. I did want to ask a question about this because last year, I remember at retreat, we were kind of looking at all of the calendar dates that were available to us as a municipality to hold elections. And we have, not just with franchise agreements, but with many other items that need to come forward for a vote of our residents. So at what point are we going to look holistically at that calendar to decide?
It's on the agenda. So, and actually, Mr. O'Leary described, we probably need to start thinking 10 years out on the election calendar to provide adequate opportunity for public education on all the things and to avoid that voter fatigue. How strategic can we be about picking the right ballot just so we're not wearing everybody out? So kudos to Mr. O'Leary and that long-range vision. I think our city clerk put together what she thinks are available for the next three years. And of course, it's always subject to change because sometimes the state legislature just says, nope, that's not available anymore, and just grabs that off the list. So Friday, we'll bring that to you and start that long-range conversation.
The conversation about this particular item for a future calendar or I guess election date isn't set in stone for next January. Like, we could be looking at the calendar and moving that. I think that it's at council's discretion when that gets placed on the ballot.
By the second reading, we would need to know, because the second reading of the ordinance sets the date.
Yes, yeah.
So August 9th would be the second reading.
Okay.
So, yeah, council can review that Friday. And if there's a date more advantageous, or you could amend that in the second reading of the ordinance.
And I remember last year in the conversation that it was preferable to OG&E to have it as its own item on an election. Is that still the case?
It is.
Okay. I just want to emphasize that we have a ton of things coming forward. So, you know, I don't know that there's necessarily a promise that we can make based on the review of whatever we've got coming forward. So, but it's good to know. Thanks.
Certainly, and we'll work with the city on setting the best date. But do you know that what you're expressing as far as the ongoing communication, we would love to really strengthen that. One of the things that my department is actually eager and would love to engage with every single municipality is actually be able to go back and forth and review your minutes, for example, from your plan review meetings. Because that gives us a clear understanding of what's coming in regards to development in your municipality. So it gives us the ability to take a look at, as Daryl was talking earlier, long range. This is what's coming, this is the way that we might be able to work with the other utilities. Because when you're looking at burying lines, it's not just our pole. I mean, we have other entities that utilize our poles as well. So you're having to work with them and ensuring that that move is going to be beneficial for everyone. So the more communication we have ongoing there, the better. We are also talking about working hand-in-hand with your parks department and your vegetation so we understand, again, and moving forward with plan the right tree in the right place. It's really hard for us to meet the expectations of the community when everybody has a different idea of what's appropriate. And of course, I mean, I want to decide what I'm going to plant in front of my house, but it may not be the best. And I know that some of the challenges that we also experience with circuits and our outages is even having the ability to go into someone's property to trim. So it may be that your backyard is perfectly fine, but the issue's being caused by trees in someone else's yard that is prohibiting us from going in and actually doing the proper trimming. So there's so many components that education is going to be key, and we're really excited to continue the conversation and enter into partnership with you on that.
Great, thank you so much.
Thoughts, comments?
Nothing. So Mr. Mayor will review election dates at the retreat. Council will, as long as we know, by August 9th for the second reading, what date goes in there. Second reading will be before you public hearing and like off to the races. We'll start putting together those cooperative agreements on vegetation management, and we will bring you back what that strategy might look like on Jenkins and on Constitution with actual cost based on the existing infrastructure.
Great, perfect.
We're very close on the Jenkins.
Do have one question.
Yes, sir.
On Lindsay Street, when we bury the lines, was that all our cost? Because they had to relocate above-ground poles that were there, so...
I don't know that I call it by the same, it's all ours. It felt like it was all ours, but 1.7 million was that mile of underground line cost? And OG&E wouldn't have relocated the poles at no cost. So that gives you some idea of what it costs to do that for a mile.
Yeah.
And I can imagine those were big lines on Lindsay, I would assume?
Some, yes, some, no. It just was more expensive to bury than it was to carry it over there.
Yeah, yeah. So we paid the full cost, though, in that one?
And it was in our body, so we...
Right, yeah, the voter was approving, yeah.
That element.
I don't think it was the full, we worked with you all on that.
Sure.
And I can give you more specifics, but there was a collaboration with it.
Yeah, because I can see if, whatever the cost of relocating, applying that to our burying project or something like that type of thing. Okay.
I can, I do have the specifics on that.
I think that's exactly right. There's a lot of more elements that go into that than we had required easements, additional easements, things of that nature. We did a combined utility conduit system for the other utilities so they can get out of the way of underground power. Lots of elements to it that may have gone beyond the 1.7, frankly.
Thanks, Sean.
Anything else? We're adjourned.